Recall this first meeting of August.
August, boy, I don't even have my Christmas decorations down yet. The light is on. Recall this meeting back to order. Ladies and gentlemen, the city council started this meeting at seven o'clock tonight, went into closed session for one item as it was listed on the agenda. That item was a conference with the legal counsel regarding potential litigation. Nothing was concluded finally, and we don't have to make a report, but the council did unanimously decide that we do want to at least announce where we are up to now on this particular issue. It concerns a home in the 1100 block, North A Street, that we've had some problem with for years. We have, the city has gone in with court's permission and cleaned up the property. We're looking at the possibility of having to do this over and over and over again. They have not been responsive to our, the owners have not been responsive to us to keep it in fine condition. Tonight, we authorized the step of an appraisal for the purposes of possibly acquiring the property by the city and taking some other action. As you all know, we unanimously, over the last couple of years, have supported much more aggressive code enforcement to beautify our city and some of these facilities. So tonight, we wanted to let the public know what we're doing on this case because it is a drastic step that we're taking. And it's still ongoing, but that's, we won't be talking in detail if we get into litigation or whatever, but we did want to give you the subject matter tonight. At this time, I'll ask you to rise. We have the invocation. The agenda does not have Reverend Denton's name on it. We're glad he came forward and joined us tonight.
Eternal creative spirit, we thank you for the promise that whenever we turn earnestly to you with problems, questions, needs, that we can be certain that you are a receptive office, that your concerns are very much our concerns, for our needs are important to you. And we thank you now, as this city council gathers, to deal with numerous issues, some tedious, routine, some occasionally a bit explosive and frustrating, that we can know you're with us and that you're concerned for what would be best for the citizens of our beloved community. Help us, we pray at this time, to be attentive. Help us to be thankful for all of the abundant ways in which you have blessed us. This we pray in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. We'll move into the city administrator, the executive director's status report. Ms. Barcelona.
Mr. Mayor, council members, audience and viewers, I have no status report items to report. However, I do have an announcement that is bittersweet. City Clerk Donna Taronas, this is her last night attending, you know, in her function as city clerk. She has accepted a position with the Orange County Sanitation District, and she will be greatly missed. Donna, thank you for your service to the city of Long Poak and your commitment to the position of city clerk and to the city council. Thank you.
We'll then, what did, okay, under agency requests and announcements, we have a report
Honorable mayor, city council members, at your request, I am before you tonight to report the findings of a root cause analysis of the city of Long Poak Senior Community Center to determine the cause for project delays and increased costs. The purpose of this analysis is to identify for council areas for improvement when planning future city public facilities projects. To conduct the root cause analysis, a city team was comprised of Public Works Director Larry Bean, Community Development Director Arlene Pelster, Parks Recreation and Urban Forestry Director Dan McCaffrey, Fire Chief Lea White, Management Services Finance Director Brad Wilkie, Utility Director Ron Stassi, and Administrative Aid Carol Smith. The team approached the analysis researching public records on the project, and staff report covers a period of nearly five years of activity to present and summarizes public records in chronological format, addressing eight components and findings of each component, which I will present to this time. The eight components include articles from the Long Poak Record prior to voter approval and upon the passage of Hospital Healthcare District Bond Measure E 2005 on September 13, 2005. Component two covers activity from October 2005 through May 2, 2006, related to the proposal to exchange the Long Poak Valley Community Center for the Long Poak Hospital District Component three reports appointment and meetings held by the Long Poak Valley Community Center Ad Hoc Committee. Component four includes consideration and research for a new community center site. From June 2006 through July 2007, council established and appointed the ad hoc committee. Meetings were held, and the KBZ Architects was selected for remodeling the hospital building. During this time, however, concerns were identified regarding use of the hospital for a community center. And on October 16, 2007, two years from a voter approval of Measure E 2005, council considered a proposal to relocate the Long Poak Valley Community Center to the Anderson Recreation Center. Component five, the lease purchase options of 1110 and 1120 West Ocean Avenue for future Long Poak Valley Senior Community Center were approved by council at the regular council meeting of August 5, 2008, nearly three years following passage of Measure E 2005. Component six covers the architectural design work and council's approval of the floor plan on May 12, 2009. Component seven includes activity related to funding for the construction and rehab of the Long Poak Valley Senior Community Center through sale of the RDA tax allocation bonds, referred to as tabs, in the net amount of $7,464,289, an allocation of $1.5 million from the CDBG. And lastly, component eight covers the bid opening on July 8, 2010, on which date the city received six bids, all very competitive and under the construction estimate of 4.4 million. And a detailed bid evaluation was performed by staff. Unfortunately, we received a protest from the second low bidder, and the protest has been denied by engineering. While this protest has pushed the contract award back, we anticipate the award of bid will be agendized for council's award at the next council meeting, following which the contract will be executed in September. And notice to proceed, construction will begin October, and completion is anticipated for fall 2011. The following slides include the team's findings for each of the eight components. And component one, the team found that the exchange of the property between the hospital district and the city was proposed following voter approval of the healthcare district bond, Measure E 2005. And staff's report notes Long Poak Record articles revealed several preliminary discussions as early as March of 2002, and reported a mutual understanding between the district and the city in support of the district's search for land properly zoned for the new Component two, proposal to exchange Long Poak Valley Community Center for Long Poak Hospital District Building. The team found that the two-moves transition plan was the initial project, and the remodeling cost outlined in the city administrator's staff report of May 2, 2006 were staff estimates, and these cost estimates were based on early negotiations with the hospital barring any Component three, appointment and meetings held by the Long Poak Valley Community Center Ad Hoc Committee. The team found that council established an ad hoc committee with clear guidelines for comprising the committee, and outlined that the specific and limited purpose of the committee was to work with a professional architect to design the remodel of the Long Poak Hospital Building for use of the new Long Poak Valley Senior Center. The ad hoc committee was advised the budget for the remodel, and they're advised on the remodel, and that the architect was to be instructed to design to that cost. Component four, consideration and search for a new community center site. Team found that the project moved in a new direction beyond the original project proposal and guidelines as a result of public input and consideration. Concerns about the evening programs and special events being too noisy at the hospital facility for the residential neighborhood due to amplified music from live bands and disc jockeys were primarily among other concerns. Were primary among other concerns. Component five, lease purchase options of 1110 and 1120 West Ocean Avenue for future Long Poak Valley Senior Community Center. The team found that the reported cost of purchase and construction was incomplete as reported at the council meeting of November 12, 2008, because the cost did not include such factors as the cost of design, construction management, development planning, contingency, and furniture. The $2 million payment from the hospital district for purchase of the Long Poak Valley Senior Center reimbursed three funds, the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, Redevelopment Agency, RDA, and the general fund budget for monies used to construct the Long Poak Valley Community Center. Hence, the $2 million payment from the hospital district did not reduce the net cost of purchase and construction, as reported to the city regarding the lease purchase option. Component six, architectural design work, approval of floor plan. The team found that during this nine-month period, the factors of change impacting the project included two new council members as well as two newly appointed executive staff, the city administrator and city attorney. Council requested reconsideration of the existing floor plan and provision of other alternatives, as well as a detailed financial analysis regarding rental revenue. The ad hoc committee was expanded by two additional at-large members, and council authorized an agreement in the amount of $27,500 for extra services with KBZ Architects to review alternative design work and floor plan. The additional design work identified another $1,284,000 in construction costs, bringing the architect's construction estimate to $4,368,577. The architect undertook a review of cost-saving options, which revealed potential negative impacts altering the original floor plan and design. Component seven, funding for construction and rehab of the Long Poak Valley Senior Community Center. The team found that this 11-month period of time includes steps necessary to develop a funding plan through the sale of RDA tax allocation bonds. The projected budget increased or changed because the project changed from the original scope of work, and because the work that was outlined in the report of November 18 was incomplete, coupled with the additional work identified by the architects during the design phase work, increasing the budget another $1.2 million. Of note, the sale of tax allocation bonds were authorized in June of 2010 in a favorable environment, realizing a lower interest rate of 5.8% rather than 7% as anticipated, which is considered an acceptable rate, producing net proceeds in excess of $1 million over the cost estimate for the community center and the dehumidifier project. Component eight, the Long Poak Valley Senior Community Center bid opening and award. While funding for construction of the Long Poak Valley Senior Community Center is secured through the sale of the tax allocation bonds, as stated previously, the apparent low bid, the six bids received, is being reviewed and will be agendized at a future meeting. The team concludes that the root cause for the project delay and believed increased costs resulted from the lack of regular reporting and established timelines, the lack of a well-defined guideline for the ad hoc committee, and an incomplete preliminary cost estimate formulated by staff rather than a professional architect. As stated earlier, the purpose of this root cause analysis is to identify for council areas for improvement when planning future city public facilities projects. Thus, the team recommends that council establish specific guidelines for future council-appointed ad hoc committees and define future city projects involving construction of new or significant rehabilitation of public buildings in three phases for council's approval, and I'll address those three phases in the next slide, and/or provide staff direction as deemed necessary. So the three phases that the team identified, phase one for the preliminary project, the project description, planning, site selection, award of the architect, redesign, and the architect's cost estimate, which will carry into phase two for design and funding approval. And finally, phase three, bid and project management award, construction through completion. And this concludes staff's report, and available to answer questions.
Thank you, Ms. Barcelona. Mr. Lingle, you were the one that asked that this report be prepared and presented orally. What are your wishes now?
Well, I have several comments, but we do have public comment on this, and I was hoping that we could hear some public comments prior to my making any comments.
All right. Any comments from the council at this time? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question, and I guess it would be now the time to ask for the question as opposed to wait for the public comment. In looking at your slides, your point number three, appointment and meeting held by the Long Poak Valley Community Center Ad Hoc Committee. The findings were that the council established an ad hoc committee with clear guidelines for comprising the committee, and outlined the specific and limited purpose of the committee was to work with a professional architect to design and remodel of the Long Poak Hospital Building for use of the new Long Poak Valley Community Center. So the council gave direction to the ad hoc committee to look at the old hospital site and work within that framework with an architect to develop plans, as I understand this finding.
That's correct.
Okay. Then the next one says, number four, consideration and search for a new community center site, and the finding says the project moved into a new direction beyond the original project proposal and guidelines as a result of public input and consideration. Was there at that point in time, the council gave new guidelines to the ad hoc committee, or was that step not there? Since there were guidelines that were established before by the council that the ad hoc committee was to work for the old hospital site, were there any new guidelines established to the ad hoc committee of what this new site should be and what is the purpose of it, and what's the scope?
Researching the public records, I didn't, the team did not see new guidelines for the scope of work at the time that the project was redirected to the new site.
So the ad hoc committee took public input as to what this new site should accommodate to, I assume, or the council? I don't know exactly where then the ad hoc committee took recommendations from. I assume it was the public. I assume that it was, or the staff, the council?
There were several meetings of the ad hoc committee, according to the documents that we researched, as well as a joint, several joint meetings with the commissions, the youth commissions, the youth commission, the senior commission, and the Parks and Recreation Commission, and the youth commission.
Okay. So my last question, comment is that one of your recommendations is to establish specific guidelines for future city council-appointed ad hoc committees. Well, my understanding according to point three is that that was done, but then at one point in time, the project went into a new direction, and perhaps there were no new guidelines set? So I just want to make it clear, I mean, my understanding from this is that, yes, the council did provide some guidelines to the ad hoc committee. As to where did it ended up going, I'm not clear how that whole thing happened. So as far as the recommendations for the future, my understanding is that the council does set specific guidelines, or they had at one point in time.
The records show that at the beginning, when the project was the hospital district, there were clear guidelines set for the ad hoc committee to work within the budget and work with the architect to develop a design within that budget.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, at this time, we'll invite the public to come forward if they'd like to comment. Mary Lou.
Sorry. I got a copy for everybody, so. Well, at the last minute today, I decided, my name is Mary Lou Parks, I'm a citizen, and I decided to put together the timeline that I had from all of the records, and I tried to keep this as short as possible because I just feel it's important that we hear it from those of us who are in the trenches doing this. My concept of the root cause analysis, according to my copious notes, newspaper articles, and agendas that I have saved, as well as my memory, such as it is, there are two main causes why we don't have the senior community center we were promised. Number one, when the hospital announced that they planned to build at the existing location of the Long Poak Community Center in September 2005, a proposal was made by Jim Roggio, the CEO of the hospital, that the hospital would swap the west side of the old hospital for the community center. The seniors of Long Poak were promised by the community and Mr. Roggio that there would be a quote-unquote seamless, uninterrupted switch when, or swap, when the community center came down on July 1, 2009. Then we went about, how is that all going to work? And we had a two-phase swap that was planned, and it went on and on anyway. For several years, things went forward as though the swap would take place, although by 2007, it became clear that for many reasons, it wasn't going to work. No one came forward with a new plan. An ad hoc committee was formed and held their first meeting in March of 2007. We were given clear directions as to our duties and our limitations. We were given a tour of the west side of the old hospital, and all agreed this option wouldn't work. It was decided to put the group on hold until a better location was found, so we really didn't have very much time, and we didn't really meet very much at that point because we had no direction, and we didn't know where we were going to end up being. So several locations were explored over the next year, including the old GTE building, the Anderson Parks and Recreation Building, but none were suitable. By May 7, 2008, the senior commission asked at a senior services needs report joint meeting with the city council that the city find a new location immediately so that we could go forward with the new center. On May 20, 2008, the city began the process of purchasing a building at 1110 and 1110 West Ocean, and the seniors were promised we would have a new center by late 2009. The senior commission asked for and received a preliminary proposed schedule, a timeline, before September 5, 2008. The new center was to be finished by January 8, 2010. This would prove to be wishful thinking. If the city had set a timeline from the beginning that included finding a suitable location by a certain date, we just might have had our seamless transition. The second root cause started in November 2008 at an ad hoc meeting in which, after working over the months with the architect, finishing our recommendations and planning to present them to the council in February 2009 for approval, we were interrupted as we were closing the meeting by John Lynn, a citizen who had drawn up plans for a convention center that he felt we needed to look at. Mr. Lynn took a request to the city council on January 6, 2009, asking they reconsider usage and design for the new community center. On February 17, 2009, after a number of meetings with community members concerning Mr. Lynn's proposal, the council was asked to approve the floor plan chosen by the ad hoc committee. This approval was interrupted by Mr. Lynn, and there were many more months of government action. The city council also asked for a new project, and the city also asked for a new project to be completed. The council also asked for a new project to be completed. The council also asked for a new project to be completed. The council also asked for a new project to be completed. The council also asked for a new project to be completed. The council also asked for a new project to be completed. The council also asked for a new project to be completed. The council also asked for a new project to be completed. The council also asked for a new project to be completed. This approval was interrupted by Mr. Lynn, and there were many more months of delay while Mr. Lynn, his friends, and various members of the Chamber of Commerce put on a public campaign, mostly in front of the new city council, to try and convince the city that we needed to have the taxpayers foot a bill for a large convention center where senior programs could be held in whatever spaces were not in use. It wasn't until May 2009 that the decision was finally made by the city to go forward with the original plans presented to them by the ad hoc committee. This second delay was brought on by citizens from the profit sector who had different goals, but only succeeded in more costly delays. And I would say, too, that when we start another project like this, if and when that ever happens, there should be more public hearings in the beginning, so maybe we could avoid having these kinds of things interrupt the process once it's begun, because I feel that maybe there wasn't enough public input. We might have been able to deal with this and put it to rest before we really ever got started. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Lou. We, I watched the red light, and I didn't stop. Mary Lou, she chaired the ad hoc committee that put this on, and I was going to let her finish her presentation. We will try to stick with the timeline of it, and I'll encourage the rest of you, as you speak, to watch the lights.
Ashley Costa, City of Lompoc. Honorable mayor and city council members, I would first like to commend the staff's analysis. I think that this is a great process that we're going through to write some of the issues that happen during these processes. But for now, I would like to look at a different issue, which is towards the future, so I would like to talk about the recommendations stated in the analysis. And I would like to suggest, in the event that the council accepts staff recommendations stated in this analysis, the following is included. Found under the first recommendation, I would like to see it include within the definition of an ad hoc committee, guidelines and requirements of quote expertise in order to participate in said committee. So it looks like there were guidelines in the original plan. However, one of the issues in this analysis was the lack of expertise on the ad hoc committee. So I would like to know what, who is eligible to be on the committee, and what exactly that means if a, if the recommendation for, or for, excuse me, the first recommendation is accepted. And secondly, found under the second listed recommendation, I would like to see Phase Three list any aspects associated with post-construction and project completion, such as costs, liabilities, or quote unforeseen contingencies, simply because it seems that that is something seen on other projects as well, not taken into consideration, that I think should be discussed in this process. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Costa.
Honorable mayor and council members, Pat Brady, citizen of Lompoc, member of the infamous ad hoc committee. It seems like it's going on and on and on, doesn't it? I just have a, one huge suggestion, and that is the fact that there was a team who looked into the root cause analysis. No one contacted me, no one contacted any member of the ad hoc committee. How can you do a cause analysis without talking to the people who were involved in this? And I mean, we were involved. We took lots of shots, we took lots of our faults, but we continued to do this. And I would venture to say that at least the majority of the ad hoc committee, this was something really from the heart. Ms. Costa is saying that we didn't have the expertise on our committee. We live in this community. This was our, our community center. We depended on the expertise of the staff and of the architects, and on staff, you have engineers, you have all of these people. That's what we depended on for our expertise. But this all came from the heart. And again, I applaud the fact that Mr. Lingle asked for this. I applaud Laurel, you and your team for doing this, but I think you missed the boat. The majority of the people that were on your team were never at a meeting, never questioned any of us, never talked to any of us. And, you know, if you go back through everything, the big deal was the ad hoc committee, and whether we had direction, or whether we felt we had direction. So I think you need to, you know, maybe we need to go another step further here. So, thank you.
Ms. Brady?
Yes.
It's been mentioned several times that the ad hoc committee was given clear direction. In your opinion, was the ad hoc committee given clear direction?
Yes, I think we were in the beginning, given clear direction. And then when the hospital didn't work, I think then there was kind of a fall down there, where we didn't quite know exactly what the council thought.
John Lynn, City of Lompoc. Yeah, I didn't have this in my prepared remarks, but I agree completely with Mary Lou. I think if there had been more opportunities at the front end for collaboration on the design, that a lot of problems at the back end would have, would have not happened at all. By the time really any of us found out what was going on, the design was already, was finished. And I don't think anybody intended any evil by that, it's just the way it worked out. But I think other things could have been incorporated at the front end that would have made it a better project. I believe this review was well done with regard to a document review, but I think Pat was right on in saying that there were a lot of things outside the documents that should have been considered in these. And here are a couple of examples. You know, I'm told there was an informal agreement with the hospital district at the time of the Home Depot project with regard to this whole situation, and that, you know, we could have looked a little further down the road and had a solution then. There's a great deal of discussion, particularly in the real estate community, about the $1.5 million purchase price for the building, easily double what anybody felt it was worth. We had a building that was in poor condition, had been vacant 25 years. It's a very questionable appraisal. It was done by an out-of-town, out-of-area appraiser. Now, I'm not an appraisal expert, but I spoke to someone who's pretty good at it, and they felt it was badly flawed. The land, on the other hand, was approximately fair market value, and was about what everybody expected it would go for. No mention was made of the $800,000 that was taken from the hospital money and used to backfill the city budget when we were short. I realize there's nothing inappropriate about that, but it certainly should have been I hope that the council might create another ad hoc committee that might incorporate some of the experts in these kinds of matters that we have in the community, that could write these processes. And that would be two things. Number one, it would be written by people who have more understanding of it than any of us. And number two, it would be written by people outside the government circle who understand, perhaps, how we on the other side of the fence work, and, you know, sometimes it's just communication issues. The staff works one way, and we in the private sector work another. So there's some suggestions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lynn. Does anyone else like to comment at this time? Lingle, on rise, we'll close the public comment period, and we'll bring you back. Now, Mr. Lingle, what would you have us do now?
Well, I'd like to make some comments, and then we'll bring it back to the council, I guess. First of all, I'd like to thank Ms. Barcelona and her staff for preparing this root cause analysis. I know it took a lot of time, a lot of expertise on your part, and I really appreciate that. I think it was, hopefully, it's going to be well worth the effort for future projects. I am very pleased that some causes were found in the root cause analysis, but I'd just like to make some comments on some of the findings. We came with some findings, but we didn't really, what I didn't see were some recommendations. Now, you have some recommendations up there, and I appreciate those. And I went over these with Ms. Barcelona earlier today, so I won't go into a lot of detail. But some of them that I will be going, or I mentioned Ms. Barcelona and we'll be discussing later, was in finding number two. I'd like to make sure that we take caution with changes after Phase One. A project like this, we should have a budget. Then with the budget, get a lot of public input. Once we have the public input, then go with an ad hoc committee, give clear direction, and let them come up with a project that is within the budget. After that, very few changes. I mean, you know, if there's changes, we have to make sure that they're within the scope of our overrun, and the overrun should be very moderate. Finding number three, assuring that the, I asked Ms. Brady, and she assures me that they were given proper guidelines, and I appreciate that. But making sure that we communicate with the ad hoc committee in all phases of the workings of an ad hoc committee. This committee, whether it was perceived or real, we had some concerns about a Brown Act violation. And no blame, no blame to this ad hoc committee. I believe the blame goes, comes back to the city on this. We need to give clear directions to all committees, including, maybe especially, ad hoc committees, where they don't have the expertise of working with staff all the time. I know we said we were going to do this, but I'm not sure we have, I haven't seen it yet, but make sure that all members that represent the city have clear instructions on what involves the Brown Act, so we don't have something like that happening again. Finding number four, I'd like to make sure that we not only have established the formal guidelines and education, but that we have some way of monitoring the progress of the ad hoc committee. Just like I feel many projects that have taken place, we have, I'm going to use a term that I've used quite frequently over the last week, but a lack of follow-through. So it's up to us, the council, and the city staff to make sure that we stick to a schedule, and that we have follow-through and communication with the ad hoc committee on an ongoing basis. Number five, the purchase of the property. It's been addressed, whether it was a fair price or not, I'm not here to argue that. But I, here again, I request that we establish a budget prior to going into purchasing any property. If that property meets our needs and was within the budget, it's okay. If it's not, we have to go back and rethink it. But make sure that all phases of a project are within our original budget. I realize there's going to be unforeseen, we saw that again, unforeseen expenses. There could be some, but we have to make sure that those unforeseen expenses are kept to a minimum. And finally, finding number six, make sure that council members are briefed on major projects in an attempt to make sure we do not have further delays, but make sure that the council is continually updated on any major projects like this. And again, I want to thank Ms. Barcelona and her staff, because it's, I think it's a very well-done analysis. I just think it lacked a few recommendations in the findings, but thank you very much.
Ms. Rouge.
Excuse my voice, I have had some problems over the weekend. Going through this, looking back at this, reminds me of trying to explain a perfect storm, like that movie. A lot of elements came in, and it did, it turned into a perfect storm. The boat sailing along, we had to change our captain and our navigator in the middle of the storm. We had three new crew members on deck. Our destination, we had a destination, and then because we didn't have a clear picture of where we were going, or a navigator, we started going around in circles. And I think a lot of things came into play here. The ad hoc committee did a terrific job under all this pressure. I know some of you personally, and I know how frustrated you are, and then you worked from your heart, and did an excellent job. And we got to where we needed to be. Along the way, I think we needed to have updates. I agree with Councilmember Lingle on the recommendations. According to the different phases, I think every phase that happens, however way you want to word it, there should be a cost estimate and a cost update every single time, so we know that costs are, you know, either diminishing or growing, and where we are. I think a lot of it has to do with the benchmarks along the way, along the way, and keeping with our timeline. I was, I'm really disappointed that we could not make that transition. And I sat up here and said, you know, it was going to happen, and I firmly believe that. But as I said, it just, things got sidetracked. We got sidetracked by the community, the public input. I needed a definition of an ad hoc committee. To me, it's a committee of community members, and I know with the pool, it was community members that worked for two years, trying to find a site and to get the pool going. And that, not delayed, but it, everyone had to be very thorough with that. So setting guidelines for an ad hoc committee, I think they need to, they'll vary, because if you set a mission for an ad hoc committee, it has to be for that specific purpose, and we need to look at that. I know there are different places where ad hoc committees are mentioned and guidelines for them, and I believe we put some of those things in our handbook about it. The ad hoc committee and all committees and commissions are under the auspices of the Brown Act. I know that's in our handbook. I wanted to thank Laurel and the staff. I do agree with Ms. Brady that the ad hoc committee should have been in on this, because I know they have definite opinions about it. I also would like to ask Ms. Barcelona about why we're being accused of backfilling our general fund with some of the payment from the hospital. Would you like to speak to that, Ms. Barcelona?
While I don't know the specifics, I do know that there was a payment plan, there were two payments projected in 2009, and I believe there was, I want to say $500,000 from the hospital in the front for design work.
Yeah, but I don't think, well, I don't know. Brad, do you know about that hospital payment?
When the payment came in, the previous finance director had done up a schedule that identified the specific costs that had been incurred by the RDA and by CDBG for the construction of the old center. Those two entities were fully reimbursed for those costs for the construction of that building, once it was torn down. The remainder of the funds went to the general fund, because it was unallocated to either one of those two projects. So basically, the two funds were fully reimbursed, and the $2 million, the amount in excess of that amount went to the general fund.
Okay, thank you. That really doesn't explain that. So it went into the big, the general fund budget, then?
Yeah, and I think one of the reasons for that is there were many funds that were used to build and develop the old center. CDBG and RDA were two of them, but the other one was recreation. And the recreation component is a component of the general fund, so that, that component of money that had been spent, to some extent, was a reimbursement to the general fund for the costs that were part of the recreation. The actual costs that were involved in the construction of that building were in excess of $2 million, so that $800 did not reimburse fully the costs that had, over time, been spent by the recreation department.
I think, I think that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rouge. Ms. Mardiner?
Thank you, mayor. Listening to Ms. Parks' testimony on how she sees the root cause analysis, and then comparing it to what the staff has, there is clearly one point that there is no agreement, and that is- and that is, and I think that's where the breakdown started happening, was when the ad hoc committee decided that the old hospital site was not a suitable site. And that was the ad hoc committee's decision. The project did move in a different direction, and I don't see anywhere here where the council really took a proactive view to look for that new site. I also don't see anywhere here where the, actually, the ad hoc committee was a participant in looking for a new site. And I find that just basically wrong. I don't think that is the right approach. So, so looking at these two facts that have been put in front of us here today, we do need to establish very specific guidelines, and if we're going to set ourselves with an ad hoc committee, we better include them in the process 100%, including in the aftermath of the root cause analysis. So I really would like to make a suggestion, as far as this establishing specific guidelines, that the ad hoc committees have to be, whatever project, the ad hoc committee has to be 100% involved in all the aspects of that project, if we're going to give that authority and that guideline, because the ad hoc committee, in a way, is representing the public. So maybe we do need new guidelines, as far as I'm concerned. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lingle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have just one more point. Councilmember Roger brought up a, a good point, and that was the changing of the guard midstream. And even though it did have an impact, I'd like to suggest that this is an opportunity that we have, that something like this, we do not, it should not have had an impact. Now, I'm a boy that grew up in the Midwest, and I used to see the Canadian geese in the fall of the year, flying with their beautiful V, heading north. Okay, I'm sure many of you have seen the Canadian geese. There's a process that I learned, it's way back in one of my management classes, it's Canadian geese leadership. And that is where the leader of this V, the goose, I don't know if you know that, but the first goose, is not leading away the entire time. It leads until it gets tired, and then it falls back to the pack. And the next one comes up, and it continues to lead the pack. They never break formation, they continue to go in the right direction, they arrive where they're going to go on time. This is what we need to show as the council members, we need to show a seamless leadership, where no matter who is leading us, we continue on, on our track and get there on time, on budget. We had many changes, yes. We had two new council members, and now at this point, we have a third new council member, and this project still is not finished. But that is not a reason for the project not going forward. We have to show our leadership and just continually head in the right direction, on time and on budget, so, thank you.
Mr. Turpin.
Well, there's been a, a lot of comments made, and a lot of valid points made, but as I recall, prior to coming on to the council, this, and like Ms. Parks said, this has been going on for a very, very long time. But once I got on the council and started going over all the paperwork and everything, the ad hoc, I thought, did an excellent job. I thought staff here at the city, and of course, I, I get blamed for backing and supporting the staff here, but, you know, when they do something right, you need to pat them on the back, and I think they, they were on it. I think the biggest downfall was, the council wanted to be convenient, and courteous, and kind to the community, because every time this council came down, and every time the staff came up with, "Your duck's flying," geese, flying, anyway, someone in the community would step up and say, "Well, you know what? I think we ought to look at this." "Well, why?" "Well, then we give them time to talk about it." "Well, then we go..." And it, to be honest with you, I think the monkey's on our back, right up here. I don't think it's on staff, I don't think it's on ad hoc. Yes, I agree that we need to have more input given to the people that we select to do what we ask them to do, absolutely. If there's any kind of a breakdown at all, whether it be funding, the facility, communication has to be there. So, like I said, I, honestly, I, I feel that, you know, we just had a seminar on economic development. Well, a couple of the council members here kind of alluded to it, but didn't say it, but maybe that's what we need. Maybe we need an economic development person that comes on board, that can communicate just 100%, and that's their contact. We don't have to go through all the geese, we just go through that contact. I don't know, but I do, I do know that this council listened and agreed to postpone, time and time again, because of community suggestions. So maybe the council needs to finally sit down and say, "Okay, you know, we have carried this on long enough, it needs to be done." So I, I don't know, I, I agree that there's been a lot of points made, and I think the report that Ms. Barcelona gave was excellent. So I, I think it really comes back to the council.
Thank you. One of the wishes of the council is respect for the item before us. This was, Mr. Lingle, this was a request that a report be prepared and be given orally at a council meeting.
Well, I don't believe there's really any action required on this, there's no vote required, other than I'd like to, I'm sorry? Oh, recommendations, okay, let me take a look. Where is, where is my agenda? Let me see your agenda. Okay, there we go. Okay, so I would like to move that we accept recommendation A, establish specific guidelines for future council-appointed ad hoc committees, and B, define future city projects involving construction of new or significant rehabilitation of the public buildings in three phases. That's my recommendation is.
Take a second motion.
I'll second. Can you add the part about having cost analysis with each phase? Is that okay?
Well, if we're asking for guidelines, they'll, they'll come, and we can incorporate them. If we start getting more specific now, it's almost like trying to write the policy. May I suggest that if we want a policy, let's have the draft be prepared and come back, because that was one of the comments, yeah. I, I like the concept of three phases. Phase one, uses staff. We don't go out and get the experts, we don't go out and do the detailed cost analysis, because we haven't really defined a project at that time. We're talking general scope. And then as the other fi, we get into the other fi, the other phases.
Mr. Mayor, phase one does include an architect cost estimate.
Okay, we can talk about that when that one comes back. I, I think, at the time that we define a preliminary project, we don't have a firm design. We have, we are going to have the number of, of public hearings and whatever, and an architect's cost estimate is expensive. And I think it's premature, but I, but, but, but I like the breaking it into, into the phases, and I, I think the staff require, the, the motion before us is to accept the recommendations of staff, and have them establish specific guidelines using the three-phase approach. And we can deal with the individual parts of it as it comes forward.
I agree, Mr. Mayor, and all of the points that we've made here will be incorporated into, we are going to stay on, on top of it. We are going to educate the ad hoc committee, we are going to make sure that they have clear guidelines. I believe those will all be included in these three phases, so.
Yeah, we have a motion on the floor. Can we, can we vote on that motion? It is unanimous approval. Moving on to oral communications.
Excuse?
This time, we'll open it for the public to, no, let's see, I'm, I'm sorry. Are there other council or agency requests and announcements under this, under this item? Ms. Mardener.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to make a request to agendize an item, and the item is, I would like the staff to review our sign ordinance, and in that reviewing the sign ordinance, I would like the staff to compare our sign ordinance with other cities, and provide an analysis on the pros and cons of the sign ordinance that we have today, and whether there is any value in changing it. And the reason why I'm asking this request is that I do hear a lot from the business community that our sign ordinance is perhaps strict, obsolete, whatever names. So I am, I am making this request out of basically a lot of public comment that I have heard regarding the sign ordinance. In order to do this, of course, I need other council members to agree to it, so we can agendize it.
Are there other council members at this time that, that would like to support the request of Ms. Mardener?
Well, I'll support it, we have looked at the sign ordinance, you know, but maybe to do it again.
Do we, do we have a timeline, and we've? I don't know. I guess, my concern is that we have established code enforcement as the highest priority, and we've directed that that go out. Then we established economic development as a high priority, and we have to meet as to what we're going to do, and direct staff to go on that. And now we want to look at the code ordinance and go out, and at the same time, we have reduced staff by a dozen people, we are asking staff to do the job in the city with a couple days off each month, with furlough, fewer hours that they're working, and, and I, I see members of staff's cars here on Saturday and on Sunday. I, how many hours went into the report we just had? And I, and, and I am really concerned, that, that everything's a priority, and we lay it forward, and we don't have the people to do it. And we're going to have to take these things and put them in some kind of a priority, and we're going to have to look at a schedule to get it done. Now, I'll, I'll support a motion to ask staff to come back and tell us what they can do and when they can do it. And if, if it's achievable, without affecting code enforcement, without affecting the, the economic development, or some of the other things that we put priority on, but, and we just, we, we, we just ask for procedures on ad hoc, on ad hoc. I, we, we don't have. We, we, we authorize the city administrator to hire an assistant because of all of the additional work that was falling on her, and the hours that she was spending, and she could, well, that is, hasn't materialized, because we, we didn't get acceptable applications, as I understand it, so.
Mr. Mayor, I do believe that--
My, my concern with--
I understand your concern of establishing priorities for the staff, and I do agree that our top priority is code enforcement, and I do agree that our top priority is economic development. I think the sign ordinance is part of the economic development approach, and it's also part of code enforcement. Are we going to enforce our sign ordinance, or are we not? So they are part of the two big priorities that this council has set. So I think, I'm not expecting a super long months of a study on our sign ordinance, I expect it to be actually fairly brief. I expect that the, that the staff will tell us, "This is our sign ordinance, Bilton has this, Santa Maria does that," et cetera. I mean, I'm not asking for a long study, but the point is, is that if we're going to focus on economic development, and we have business owners complaining about our sign ordinance, we need to look at it at one point in time. The point is, is if we're going to do code enforcement, we need to make sure what are we going to enforce, and is the right thing that we're enforcing? That's all. Thank you.
All right, we have a, a motion, and we have a second. Does anyone else like to speak to the motion on the floor?
I'll support it.
Okay, we have the majority, we have three that have asked for this, this report. Thank you. Any other council requests? Ms. Roger.
I was handed the report from Ron Stasi from the, about the Wi-Fi, and there've been several comments about our Wi-Fi not working, and so on and so forth, so here's the Wi-Fi update. In the first half of the year, we've had a small net increase in the number of Wi-Fi internet subscribers, bringing total accounts to over 1,200 people. Then, in the month of July, we saw an additional increase of 17 subscribers. Although we have lower rates than our competitors, we still face competition from those providers that offer internet services at a discount, if combined with other services such as cable television. We also want to remind everyone that our subscribers only pay month to month, no contract, no deposit, and no fine print to deal with. I got caught on that, by the way, with DirecTV. Also, as of the end of fiscal year 2010, 72% of electric meters and 28% of our water meters have been equipped for radio read, utilizing the city's Wi-Fi network. And the electric goes a little bit faster, and I think the, the water meters, it was going to take, I think it was five, five years or so to get all the water meters, so that they could be read with the Wi-Fi. So I think this is a really good report, and contrary to what's been said down at Southside, or wherever, the Wi-Fi's working just fine. I also was handed a poster from Joanne Plummer, from the rec department. We're going to have another movie night in Ryan Park on Friday, August 13th. I think Tony thinks that's the greatest thing since sliced bread. It starts at 6:00 PM, you can come and bring your kids, and your chairs, and your blankets, of course. There'll be food, and drinks, and snacks, and kids' activities, and it's all free, and the movie's going to be Marley and Me. So please come on down on Friday, August 13th. That's all I have.
Thank you. Tony?
That was a good time. I'm just disappointed it took the park and recs this long to get the second one in, because we had a great time. Froze, but we had a great time. And I hope the people that aren't here tonight are enjoying the national night out next to Foursquare Church tonight, it's between, well, it's, in fact, it's probably over now, because it was from 6:00 to 8:00. Yeah, there's the sirens, it's over. But, you know, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, but I'm going to, I'm going to add work to staff. As just about everybody in this community knows, I really have heartburn when it comes to alcohol and juveniles, especially, young adults, someone under the age of 21. And over the last few months, I've seen more and more statistics given out by surveys throughout the United States. One of them that just drove me crazy was, ages between 6 and 14, one out of eight have been intoxicated. So what I would like, is I would like to propose staff look into, because I spoke with the city administrator, Ms. Barcelona, who in turn contacted the chief of police, Chief Dabney. It's an ordinance, and in essence, it's called Provide Social Host Libilities for Underage Drinking. In a nutshell, what this proposal is, and would help reduce, is underage drinking, no matter if you're in public, private, or otherwise. In other words, if I throw a party, and juveniles show up to this party, and there's alcohol involved, and the juveniles are consuming this alcohol, law enforcement can take action on it, and the owner of the property is responsible. This isn't a crackdown on, you know, private citizens, you know, and their family, this is gatherings, this is, you know, in solving, I think it's five or more at one activity. This is, you know, in solving, I think it's five or more at one activity. But this is something that I would like staff to look into and then agendize for council to look at in a, you know, at a future date.
Okay, we have a request for action to staff following the handbook. It takes three, two...
I'll second that.
One second?
I'll support that.
Third second. Okay, let's ask staff to pick that up. Do you have any other comments? Mr. Lingle?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, over the past week, I was honored to be able to judge a talent show that our Parks and Recreation Department put on Shining Stars. There were 12 candidates that most, I think they're all teenagers and down to, I believe, maybe six years old, seven years old. Just fantastic kids, very good talent, and unfortunately, we had to pick winners, and it was almost impossible to do that. So I was there to do that. But I wanted to, at the last, or this past week, we spent a lot of time with the Economic Development Consulting Team, and one of the things they are going to recommend, they did recommend, is that we promote the good things that are happening in the city. Ms. Rogé just talked about the movie in the park. But this past weekend, for less than $10, you could have gone to a talent show, had a wonderful time. You could have spent an afternoon at a dog show, had a wonderful time. You could have gone to see a play, Annie, had a wonderful time. You could have gone and sat on the lawn at our public library and listened to two hours of just wonderful jazz music, and you could have had a barbecue provided by the Lions Club. Those are some of the great things that are happening in this community, a place where there's never anything to do. Okay, but there are some things that we don't do, and that is, our city council does not get paid $100,000 a year. So those are some of the things we do do and some of the things we don't do. And thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lingle. Any other comments? Reporting on activities of the last couple of weeks, I was... I was pleased to represent the community at a function in which Walmart contributed $25,000 to the food pantry. They chose that as one of their major donations this year because of all of the publicity on the shelves of empty shelves and the added drain. When I went, I was a little apprehensive because there is controversy in town with Walmart wanting to expand, and I asked Walmart if this was something that they were proposing because of that, and they showed me a list of their donations this year and a list of their donations last year, and additional list of their donations the previous year. And there is, there were at least, I'd guess, 15 organizations that have received $1,000, $2,500, whether it's each of the high schools, whether it's the PEL, whether it's the youth sports activities, whether it's the certificates they give to all the teachers so they can buy theirs, come in and pick up their supplies to start a school. It was a, the list was a tremendous recommendation, representation of a community that, or an organization that is showing support for the community. One of the things that they are doing that they told me about that I had never heard of before, and I was really pleased to hear it, they encourage their employees to get involved in the community. They have a small system of time cards, and if an employee does donate any time to the community, Little League coach, a Saturday picking up trash, whatever, turn in the time card, and Walmart will match the hours worked with dollars that are given to that same organization so the employees can, just by volunteering to coach Little League, they can also raise funds for Little League. So this particular donation was something that I was proud to be a part of. The food pantry is doing great things with very limited resources, but I was also surprised, very pleasantly surprised, to see how much is the contribution of that organization to the city of Long Poak. So... Mr. Durham?
Thank you. I'm sorry, I failed to mention, but last week, well, actually, on July 26th, some of the council members and the city administrator attended a presentation given to the community near the old hospital area. There's a business that is interested in joining hands with the hospital, and I think it's something that is going to benefit this community if it does in fact happen. And what it is, in a nutshell, is it's a rehab center for first responders. That means fire, police, military, you know, anyone that, you know, has any kind of addiction or post-traumatic syndrome, you know, because of Afghanistan, whatever. They will attend this place. And I tell you, I sat there, in fact, you know, it was difficult not to become emotional with it, especially when some of the people that are talking with the hospital board about coming in possibly. Because personally, with the years of mine in law enforcement, not only myself, but many other men and women that I've worked with and admired, if this had been around 20, 30 years ago, if nothing else, at least I know their marriage would have still been together. So it's a great program, and I hope that if we get an opportunity to entertain this group coming in, I think it's well worth it. I think it'll benefit not only our community. The closest facility is in Hemet, and we have at least 20 personnel going to Hemet. Well, I'd just soon see them come here. So just for information. I think it's a great program, and it's AMS, I believe, is the organization, and they gave an outstanding presentation. So, thank you.
Okay, seeing no more comments from the council, we'll move to the next item on the agenda, which is oral communications, maximum of five minutes for any of you that want to speak. If you'll watch the lights.
Mayor, council members, John Lynn, City of Long Poak. This will be a shameless commercial. The King's Furniture Building has been empty for many years because of the changes when the mixed-use ordinance was put in, and a new business is going in there, which is an antique mall. And I was hoping that everyone on the council would take an opportunity to go by and greet the person who's bringing that business in that will save that building from foreclosure. And tell your friends. On the sign ordinance side, somewhere in a file cabinet, I still have the sign ordinance that this council commissioned the Chamber of Commerce to create, the revisions to the sign ordinance. And Arlen and I were talking about it because we were both involved in it. We think it was 2006, and I would happily bring a copy of that disc and/or the written copy to the council. And at that time, we did a very extensive survey of sign companies, sign users, made changes based on that and on some recommendations from the council, the consultant that the council had gotten, and ultimately rejected the ordinance they had written, and that might save staff a lot of time. I would hope that with regard to what Ms. Durham talked about, that our RDA would be going forward to help those people with their project in any way possible. And finally, in the past, I know a number of community members have recommended a bulletin board on the city website or with a link to the city website where somebody could go to Mr. Lingle's point and look at all the things that are happening, because, you know, there were three tonight, and as I was covering them on my TV show, I stumbled over one because a caller called in and said, "Hey, it's going on right now." You know, go down. And but there's no single location, and the Long Poak record doesn't reach every home. That would be a really simple thing, even if we had a community group that wanted to do it and get it linked to the city website so you could go dink and it would go over and hit the bulletin board. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Lynn.
On the drinking ordinance, I don't think it should be the property owner, it should be the tenant of the property. I hardly think I would want to be responsible if I was in New York and owned a home in Long Poak that I rented to you, and you did the deed. So that needs to be put in there rather than the owner. And the other thing on the sign ordinance, I think you definitely want the community, business community involved in that, because some of them are the villains. I can remember back in that day, Long Poak Ford had a bulletin clean across the back of the lot that was illegal at the time. I couldn't get them to come to a meeting, and I'd written letters to everybody about their signs, and very few showed up. But somehow or another, we need to get the people out, involved in these businesses, and understand what their needs are, like banners. Back then, the staff and a couple of people on the committee that was working with the city part of it wanted the banners up for 30 days. Well, promotions are generally for at least three months. If they're going to have a tire sale, it's on for three months of the summer season or whatever it is. So you need to understand all these things, and it takes somebody in all these businesses to do that. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Seacrest, the drinking, you're right, absolutely right. It's mom and dad, it's you, if you're putting the party on, you're the one that's going to get popped. Yeah, not, you're right. And I know, knowing you, you'll just handle it this way, but that's okay.
Ashley Costa, City of Long Poak, Honorable Mayor, City Council Members. Speaking to what John Lynn brought up, I also wanted to discuss the issue of our city website. I think that attempts should be commenced to update and revamp the city website. I believe it's a digital gateway to our community. It does a deplorable job at communicating our city's beauty, vibrance, and technological adeptness. Somebody of my age who uses my laptop more than I eat or sleep probably, I've seen websites by the millions, I would say, at this point, and I really think that we can do a better job, and, you know, a good suggestion about having a monthly calendar, you know, interactive parts of the website, links to social networking sites, which have become such a big part of the digital community as well, can all be done at low cost or even no cost if it's done through a community organization.
At our economic development workshop, the team, we discussed that at length, the updating the website or revamping the website, in fact, adding, I think, two or three other websites. So we are working on that, we are aware of it, and got all that from the economic development team last week.
Well, we actually even talked about the suggestion of maybe hiring someone just to do that as a public information. That way, they could, you know, same thing that Mr. Lynn said and yourself, things that are going on now, people could very easily access, look at, and say, "Hey, wow, this is what's going on tonight." So, yeah, we did talk about it in length.
I was just curious if there'll be a comprehensive report given for that meeting for those who could not attend?
There will be. It will be available, yes. Anyone else want to speak?
Excuse me, my name is Joy Browder. First, I want to deeply apologize for the condition I'm in. We were working in our garage, and I got a call that the senior thing was on the agenda tonight, and I literally ran, that's why I'm out of breath, to get down here, but I obviously missed it. And I didn't hear your council comments, but I was taping the meeting, so I'll watch them later. But I kind of felt like the whole thing was being looked at too alone by itself. What I see are a lot of really distinct parallels between the swimming pool project and the senior center project, and I think the soul-searching should have been done after the pool project, and we might have avoided some of the problems with the senior project. Most of the things that I'm about to bring up happened during Mr. Semensky and his former colleagues' watch, and you knew our council members weren't here then, but I'm hoping that all the council will reconsider some of the way things have been done, because the public feels that both of these projects have been, I hope this is not bad language, screwed up. I mean, I hate to say that, but, you know, just looking at it, here's some things that I see that are just broad concepts that were parallels. First, the council closed down a major recreational facility without having a firm cohesive plan for its replacement or a detailed cost analysis of the options of doing something new or doing something older. In other words, right at the very beginning, it starts to go wrong, because I understand there were things happening that you had to make quick decisions at that early point. I like the idea of the timelines and all that, but I think it doesn't go far enough. Then there was a period of floundering, which in the case, the pool took years. And I call it floundering because it was what to do, how to do it, where to do it, and it just seemed to take much longer than it should have. And all this time, there was no facility in those two areas. Then I think too much power was put in the hands of the ad hoc committee, although I think that tonight they were used as scapegoats a little bit, because I really think that although I think it was inexcusable for them to shut the public out of their meetings and even have a gag order, and it did delay things a couple of months, the longest delays were caused by the council and the staff. And I think the council and the staff would have to take some blame for it. And I didn't hear enough of the mea culpa, at least on the part of the staff tonight. Then after the long years of no action, the public got so upset, the council said, "Let's hurry up and do something, even if it's wrong, let's just do something." Both controversies ended up being very, both locations ended up being very controversial and having severe drawbacks. The pool, the parking, had to be traded for some swim time, which caused problems. And then, of course, the cost doubled on the pool, and we're headed that direction on the senior center if we're not careful, and maybe even more than doubled. Of course, the pool went far over time, far over budget, and the pools, the senior centers heading the same way. And there's also a poor analysis of the problems you have, gosh, that was fast, when you, whenever you pick your site and the things like the parking problems and all that, and the senior locations were not well researched before you started deciding, "Well, let's use the hospital," and it was, "No, let's go to the..." No, let's do this. Maybe if those locations would have been considered before anything else, there might have been a little better. My question for you, and the Pocket Park seems to be starting a little bit the same way, vague cost estimates, not an exact plan. It's getting better because there's been some citizen participation. I agree, we need more citizen input. Finally, I just want to ask, who were the project managers on these two projects? Who on the city staff manages these projects? Is there a team? Is there one person? Because there's something wrong there, and I think that that needs to be looked at, too. I don't have any more time. I'll try to submit some suggestions to the council. My point tonight is not to criticize, but to hope that you'll all really take a close look. Thank you for bringing this up. We really needed it.
Ella Gale, I thought the presentations were interesting and informative, but I don't know where the senior center is. Could you tell me where it is today and where it will be tomorrow?
If there's anyone else this time? Seeing no one, we'll close, and we'll bring it back. The senior center will be on the agenda the 17th, is that correct, Ms. Barcelona?
So we anticipate that the bid award will be adjudiced for the August 17th meeting.
We have received bids. The bids are within the amount of money that we have available. We went through the process of analyzing the bids to make sure that the bidder didn't put any exceptions in, that he clearly understood the job to be done. We did receive a protest from someone who was not the low bidder protesting that for reasons that he listed, he didn't think the bidder, the low bidder, could do the job. Those have been looked at, and the package will come to the city council for a decision on award of a contract at our next meeting, two weeks from tonight. Okay, that closes oral communications. We've been at this for an hour and a half. What are the wishes of the council? Do you want to continue, or you want to break? Break? We'll take a 10-minute break.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we accept this consent calendar.
I'll second that motion.
Seeing none, let's ask our vote. First item beyond the consent calendar tonight is a public hearing. First item beyond the consent calendar tonight is a public hearing, approval of a resolution regarding the declaration of a public nuisance, again, as part of our code enforcement program. Arlene Pelster.
Thank you. This is a resolution of the council declaring a public nuisance for the property located at 409 South C Street. On July sixth, council adopted a resolution declaring its intent to conduct a public hearing tonight to declare a public nuisance with respect to the property at 409 South C Street. This property is not being maintained in compliance with city code. There are dilapidated and deteriorating fence on the property, overgrown weeds, and lumber, junk, and trash and debris which is visible from the public right-of-way. The staff recommends that you adopt Resolution 4664 (10), declaring a public nuisance and authorize abatement of 409 South C Street for the conditions that I just described. And this concludes my staff report.
Thank you. Are there any questions before we open this up to the public?
Yeah, yes, I have one. Ms. Pelster, what's the cost of abating? Is it the same as the other property we abated?
I think it will be significantly less here, probably, probably, I believe it was about fifteen hundred dollars in clearing weeds. Don't quote me on that. Because the significant property expense on the last public nuisance was the boarding of the facility. That was labor-intensive, and so that was really where it came in. And the weed growth was much, much more extensive.
Okay, thank you.
On the same note, I believe it's more than just weed abating. There's going to be some repairing of fences on this property as well?
Yes, the report indicates repair, replace, or remove all dilapidated fences.
Thank you.
That's part of the scope of work.
We'll open it up for public comment. Don't go far.
Your Honorable Mayor and Councilman, my mother-in-law and father-in-law live right next to this 409 South C Street. In order to back out in the street, it's too overgrown, and they're in their eighties and nineties, and it's hard to get in and out of the driveway. But also, there's fruit falling on the ground, so there's flies and other detriment to the property. And they spray, they have, once a month or once every two months, they have somebody come in and spray their yard and stuff. But it is really a detriment to that area. The other thing is that all the houses around there, or most of them, are really well taken care of, they're an older community. And it needs, and I would welcome the idea of an ordinance like this that would take care of the problem. Because it's not just that one house, there's other houses in the city that are doing the same thing, so.
We talked about one earlier. I didn't get your name at the outset.
Fred Hayes.
Fred, thank you.
I've known you for years, boss.
For years and years and years, for people in.
Yeah, and it's my mother-in-law and father-in-law that live next door. So, if you have any questions for them, I'd be happy to answer them, but they, they have been for years trying to get this abated or trying to get it taken care of, and we welcome the idea that you are addressing it.
We're moving on it, and as we discussed at the beginning of the evening, we're also looking at the fact that it takes a long time, the process is lengthy, and you correct it once. If we go in and correct it, we might be faced six months or a year. So we're looking, not on this one, but with what we talked about earlier this evening, moving ahead for the next step to try to make sure it's a, it's a long-term fix.
Okay, we totally, we totally thank you for addressing it. Thank you.
Any input, Fred? Anybody else want to speak this time? No one's, we'll bring it back to the council. What are the wishes of the council on the action before us?
Mr. Mayor, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead, go ahead, Bob.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to just make a couple of comments, then I'll make a motion. I agree with the gentleman that just, Mr. Hayes, that just spoke. I stopped and talked to, I believe it was your sister-in-law then, and the poor woman, she cannot open her windows during, during the day because the flies and the, the smell from the rotting fruit are just going in her direction. It's just a terrible, terrible scene for the poor neighbor over there. And one of the things I want to make sure that this resolution takes care of, and maybe Ms. Pelster can address this, is that it's not only the overgrown weeds in the front yard and the falling down fence that we're going to repair. I'm hoping that we're going to be able to get into the backyard because the backyard is completely overgrown. And it says, or adjoining property, if you can see it from the adjoining property, the neighbor can see the backyard from the adjoining property, as it is causing a nuisance to them with rats and insects that are causing her not to be able to open her window. So I'm hoping this will address the, not only the front property, the back property as well, because it may not be viewable from the street, but it is viewable from the neighbor. I'm very, also very glad we're bringing this to the council because that property was just deplorable, like we probably have others in the city, but this is one that we need to start with, and we need to let the public know that we're tired, we're not going to take, we're not going to take anymore of it. Yeah, and so please clean up your property. It's not something we want to do, but we're going to be doing it if you don't do it. And with that, I will make a motion that we accept staff recommendations.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I second.
And before we go on here, let me ask, Tony, let me ask Arlene.
Yes, we will be, we will be able to abate code violations visible from a public street alley or adjoining property.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Durham?
Well, I, too, like Councilman Linger, Lingel, drove by, and it is, it's terrible. It's not the worst in town, though. So I'm looking forward to the code enforcement team stepping up their aggressive, you know, enforcement on it. But I agree with Councilman Lingel that this is something that we definitely need to address and pass this evening.
Thank you. We have, Ms. Bartner?
Just a very short comment. The, the recommendation does include the adjoining properties, so it's visible from public street alley or adjoining properties, so I think we're, we're good there.
We have a motion on the floor, let's vote. Big share of item seven, item eight. Mr. Newbert?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. This is a consideration of a planning commission recommendation for certification of a mitigated negative declaration, approval of zone change ZC 0902, and preliminary precise development plan DR 09-11 for the Third Street Apartments, twenty-four-unit apartment complex. The property is approximately .96 acres and is located at 109 South Third Street, accessor parcel number 8515047. The recommendation this evening is that the city council receive and review the planning commission recommendation, hold the public hearing, certify the mitigated negative declaration, and direct staff to file a notice of determination for the project, waive further reading, and introduce ordinance 156510 approving zone change ZC 0902, amending the city's zoning map, adopt resolution 565910 approving a preliminary precise development plan, and adopt resolution 566010 approving a density bonus or to provide alternative direction to staff. And this concludes my staff report. I'm available for any questions.
Any questions this time? Mr. Durham?
I'm confused. When I, when I look at your proposal, on the first page, under proposal, item one, it says, you know, change, a zone change from high-density residential to high-density residential.
Yes, that can be confusing. The planned development, what happens here is a zone change is done for the planned development, and it requires that the specific project be built that was approved by, in this case, the council. The applicant had a project a few years ago, I believe it was back in 2007, that was approved, and the planned development at that time approved that specific development. And so in order to erase that previous planned development and to, to approve this new planned development, a zone change is required. Does that clarify?
Politics. Yes, it did. And my other question is, when I read through the agenda item, it kept talking, well, it didn't keep, but it brought up the carport pitch. When I, when I looked at the diagram, I'm going, what pitch? So, I mean, when it says, you know, carefully consider the architecture of the carports in their decision, what, what were you referring to there?
This was something that the, the staff identified at the planning commission level. We had a condition of approval that would require the applicant to pitch the, to put a pitch on the carports that would match the pitch, the roof pitch of the buildings.
The buildings, okay.
Right. The planning commission did review that and determined that they would accept the flat carports. And that is why tonight it's before you again to, to decide whether or not that is acceptable or to require that condition be added, that the carport roofs be pitched.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
No other questions or comments? Let's open it up for public comment. Is the applicant here tonight to, to speak to us?
My name is Kerry Moriarty, and I'm the property owner and the applicant. And before I get into this, I do want to say to Councilmember, Councilman Durham, you know, I was always confused by that myself. I had to read it about five times to think, am I missing a digit or is there something? But I think that's just the way how it, how it has to be described in order to make the zone change. So, once again, my name is Kerry Moriarty. Just a couple of comments here. This site has gone through quite a journey. We were here, boy, I bought the property in, I think it was 2003, 2004, the real estate market was just starting to take off. You know, everybody was looking for for-sale type housing. It's a nice piece of property, good location, entrance to the city. I was able to obtain an approval from the city in 2007 for a fifteen-unit PUD. All good, we had our numbers prorated, we felt we could sell the property and, you know, make some money on it. As a result of the real estate collapse and, you know, the credit crunch, it just became infeasible to continue with that project. To try to build a fifteen-unit PUD for sale is virtually impossible in today's market. So with the bank on my back, I had to come up with a plan on, you know, what can I do with this property? Because it's not free and clear, there is a mortgage on there, and, you know, after a while, you, you can only write so many checks to the bank. So we came up with an idea of a rental property because lenders are much more receptive to a cash flow analysis. If you can construct a property, cash flow, less expenses, and you can cover your debt service, they're more apt to approve it. So that's the genesis of why I'm here and asking for a project change. We came up with, with my architect, who couldn't be here tonight, but we came up with a twenty-four unit apartment complex. Current zoning is twenty units per acre. We're asking for a density bonus of four units, which is within the twenty, twenty-five percent allowance. Three of those are targeted towards affordable housing. So I stand before you, we're requesting a twenty-four unit apartment complex with a twenty percent density bonus. And the density bonus is imperative that we obtain that to make the numbers work in order to get close to any financing for a project like this. So that is huge, it's very important to obtain the twenty-four units. The benefits to the community briefly, you know, obviously, it's an enhancement to the site. It's a vacant property now, the only vacant parcel in that neighborhood. I think we're going to be having to cut the weeds ourselves here shortly, otherwise we'll be for the commission, just like the other property. But that's been ordered as of today. But that'll clean up that vacant parcel, which will be a benefit to the community. It'll provide affordable rental housing to the community, specifically for that immediate area. I think, you know, the obvious choice, the obvious project that comes to mind is the new hospital, which would be a great opportunity for employee housing. You can virtually walk or ride a bike to that property, Home Depot Center and the Future Wine Center. Minimal impacts to commuters going to Santa Barbara, Santa Maria, based on the location at the entrance of the city, not a lot of traffic coming through the city. And the potential for employment with local contractors and vendors. So there's some, definitely some positive benefits to approve the project. Two things before I sit down. I would like to request one adjustment to the project design. It's fairly innocuous since it wouldn't be seen, but the way we have it designed now, we have a master meter since it is an apartment complex. I'd like to retain the option or have the option approved to construct with individual water meters. The current design allows for individual electric and gas meters, which is typical for an apartment complex, but we have a master water meter. So I would like to retain the option to develop, and of course, we'd have to have that approved with the, with the, on the working drawings and with the planning department. But like to have that option to convert to individual water meters, reason being, the potential for condominium conversion. This would allow, once again, gives us another bullet, so to speak, to go to a lender and say, well, okay, we, you know, we have the cash flow and we also have the upside of the for-sale opportunity. The specifications for resident, multifamily residential or apartment building and for-sale or condominiums physically are basically the same. So, you know, we, we, other than this, the individual water meters, so we would have to still come back through to get a condominium conversion approved. And all the affordable housing covenants would have to be a part of that sale, so there's, there's discretion and jurisdiction to approve that. All I'm asking for is that at least we have the ability to build it, so we don't have to come back through and do the construction of, if we never come back for condominium conversion, so be it, you can still run it as an apartment building. But it just, I think it's just a step, looking, you know, looking out in the future, it always makes sense, and we'd like to retain that option. The last item concerning the carport, I think the ordinance, and I know Lompoc is looking to create more design features in their developments, and I think there is an ordinance that provides or requires that the carports would have a little bit more articulation, they'd have a pitched roof. I think that's good in some locations. This particular property, we looked at it pretty closely with my architect. I felt if we, if we put in a pitched roof, it overwhelms that property by coming in with a flat roof. And if you look at our design there, it's, it's traditionally done, would have wood, wood beams and trellis, and then it would have a metal roof there. But we're trying to make that part of the project invisible to reduce some of that bulk and mass on that property. So that was, we think that's a big feature, is eliminating that pitch and making that portion of the project less innocuous, more benign, you don't see it, opens up the site more, and I think it's a much more... You don't see it, opens up the site more, and I think it's a much more effective-looking property without the pitch. So that's where that came into play and where the adjustment was. So, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moriarty. Let me ask if we have any questions. Keith or Arlene, can you address the items that he brought up before we continue with public comment?
Sure. As far as the individual water meters, we briefly here reviewed the conditions of approval and don't see any issues there. Shouldn't be a problem to go ahead and do that. And then as far as the carports, the commission in the past has required pitched roofs when the structures, the main buildings, do have a pitched roof. A few projects that I can point out, the G and College Apartments, the Seabreeze Apartments, the Wahlberg Apartments here on West Ocean, several instances where the Planning Commission was consistent in requiring those pitched carports. Yeah, the precedent, you know, was set in that instance.
Thank you. Computer, mind, let me see if there's other comments from the public, and then we'll close it and come back here, or is this something you want to address right now? Okay. We'll continue with public, public comment. Is there anyone else in the, in the audience who would like to speak to us on the issue? We'll, we'll close public comment, then bring it back to the council. Mr. Durham, you had a comment or question?
Mr. Moriarty, you indicated, I think, if I heard you right, you indicated that it wouldn't be a traffic impact at 115 South Third for people commuting to Santa Barbara or Santa Maria?
Well, I, what I said was it would be a minimal impact in town with any type of commuter traffic, since the location is pretty much at the entrance of Lompoc, so you're not going to escalate a lot of traffic coming through Ocean or downtown.
That's the main vein. But I like the location. Don't get me wrong, I like the location. I liked, I went through the diagrams and everything, and I like the way it's set up. But, you know, it is going to, you know, create a little traffic congestion, because that is, Ocean Avenue and H Street are the two ins and outs of Lompoc. So, but.
Understand.
Thank you.
Mr. Rouge?
Yes, I was on the Planning Commission with your first project, and that was a lovely project. I really liked it. As far as the roof pitch goes, looking at the project, I guess there's not, no amenities on there. There's one picnic table in that whole outline, right? So right now, it's a driveway going in, and the apartment buildings on the south side and the carports lined up on the right side. So, you know, I think we should, I talked earlier to Ms. Bries, but there are other materials you could use to have a pitched roof that wouldn't be as expensive. And I understand your concern about the cost, but I think we should stick to the pitched roof there, because right now, looking at the project, it's, you know, a mass of buildings and a lineup of carports. So I think, you know, a little pitch in the roof might make it more attractive.
Mr. Legal?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to go back to Mr. Durham's comment about the traffic, and I guess this is going to be for either Keith or Ms. Pelzer. The study, the transportation circulation study, is that a recent study, or is it based on the 2007 project? I'm looking at, it's on page 13 of the environmental checklist.
There was no traffic study performed for this particular project. When a project comes in, we do evaluate the size of the project, the number of units, in this case for a residential project. And due to the size, the 24 units, it did not require us to go further and require a traffic study for the project.
Okay. Because I'm a little concerned, if you look at Comment A right underneath that, it says, "The proposed 24-unit apartment complex will not cause an increase in traffic." Well, I don't see how 24 units, don't get me wrong, I'm going to be voting for the project, okay? So I'm getting excited. But I don't see how an additional 24 units, assuming one point so many cars per apartment with visitors, with everything else, will not cause an increase in traffic. And then the next, it has comma, which is substantial. I don't understand that sentence at all.
And that is the important part of that sentence. There will be an increase in traffic. I think that everyone can agree on that. The traffic, however, will not be substantial, the traffic that's generated by this project.
So is that sentence incorrect, then? Should it read, "The proposed 24-unit complex will cause an increase in traffic, however, it is not substantial"?
I suppose it could be written as, "It will not cause a substantial increase in traffic," if that would be a little more.
I don't, yeah, I'm just wondering, and maybe in future, if it's clear, because it, I don't see how a 24-unit complex will not cause an increase in traffic, so.
Councilmember Legal, what we're trying to communicate here is that, and this is a CEQA document, in terms of CEQA review, there will not be a substantial increase in traffic that will cause us not to be meeting our service standards. So that's what we're trying to communicate, and we can probably clean that language up.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, just to finish my comment here, I always look at the physical impact. And when it says that there's no physical impact to the city, I like it. So I'm going to make a motion that we agree with council's, I mean, with staff's recommendations on the changing of the zoning to accommodate the 24-unit facility.
Mr. Durham, are you going to include the ability for separate metering?
I didn't, no, I'm not. And the reason why is because Ms. Pelzer's already indicated that that's something that they can handle in-house.
There's nothing in the conditions that would prohibit that. We can certainly work with the applicant to get the desired metering.
I second the motion.
The staff has asked us to do four things. Your motion is to cover all four of those?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor.
Any other comments on the item there? What does your motion say with respect to the pitched roof?
Well, the pitched roof has already been addressed, as far as Mr. Moriarty and also staff. Are you talking about the carport?
The carport.
Correct. If staff's happy with it, I am.
Okay. The concern is that the Planning Commission approved it with a flat roof, no pitch. And the staff wanted to make council aware that the past precedent for years has been to acquire, require a pitched roof on the carport. So if you do want to see a pitched roof, you will have to add a condition to that effect.
Well, then I'll let someone else make the motion, because it doesn't matter to me either way.
Okay, that motion's withdrawn. Do we have someone else making the motion? Mr. Legal?
I will, withdrawing the first motion, then? Okay. I'll make a motion to accept staff's recommendations, with the exception of adding a pitched roof to the carports.
Motion?
I'll second.
I'll second that.
Motion is seconded. Let's vote. We will stick with the pitched roof. Item number 10 is Northern California Power Agency's. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Item number nine was a request from the council. Since the request was made, we've had a request by the Lompoc Housing Development Corporation to pull this item. They don't dictate our schedule. The council wanted a resolution to, as I remember it, to show support for the theater project. Do we want to continue with this, or do we want to allow it to be withdrawn? I mean, any comments?
Mr. Mayor, I was absent at that council meeting, so I pretty much have to abstain from this whole thing, since I was not part of the decision process. Is that correct, or no? No?
You can participate in this.
Oh, okay. Mine.
This is.
Would you like the staff report? It's very brief.
Yes.
Okay. The background on this is that when the Redevelopment Agency Board, on June 15th of this year, adopted the Redevelopment Agency budget for the next fiscal year, the board included direction to staff to bring back a resolution generally supporting the theater project. And that's what we've done. We've drafted that, we've brought it before you. As the mayor indicated, it was a directive from the board, so we present it to you for your review and recommend that you review it, make any appropriate revisions, and adopt it if you feel it's appropriate.
Let me, do you want to ask for public, any public input, and then debate it up here, and then, is there any comments from the, from the public, oral communication on this item? Seeing no one rise, we'll close that part and bring it back. What are the wishes of the council on the item before us? Ann, go ahead.
I've talked to a member of the LH CDC, and evidently, the wording was not specific to their organization of this resolution. But I, that's very confusing, because the night we did this, they were all nodding their heads that this would help them with their investments. And because this wording is not specific enough, now we're told that they don't want it. But I think we should proceed with a resolution that says we're in favor of the restoration of the theater project, just to have it on the books, in case somebody else comes along and wants to know how the council feels about the theater restoration.
Bob? I think it's important that we explain why LH CDC asked for the proposal to be pulled, or the resolution to be pulled. You know, and obviously, they were very upset that we literally took $900,000 worth of support for the theater project away from them. And they feel that a resolution in supporting the project, in their words, was like sending a teenager to the bank for a loan and asking the bank to loan the money with a note from the father saying that the father was a, or the child is a good boy, as opposed to the father giving a check to the kid in support, maybe as a second. So they just don't feel that this will do anything, and the banks, supposedly, they've talked to bankers, and they agree that this resolution will do nothing to help them get further funding. That's why they opposed to the, they were opposed to the resolution.
So what do you wish to, what do you call it?
I would agree that we should honor their wishes and pull this from the agenda and not vote on it all. That'd be my position.
Mr. Durham?
Well, I think we all know that this is much deeper than $750,000. We didn't say that we aren't in favor of the theater. All we did was reallocate funding, that if we didn't reallocate it, there was a possibility of losing it. If LH CDC wants to come back and knock on our door and fill out the paperwork and give the proper documentation, we're more than happy to help them out. And staff has said that verbally, time and time again. So I disagree. I think what, to begin with, I thought this was off the calendar tonight, at least the email I got. But anyway, looking at it, and also the proposal in, you know, on our binder, to me, it indicates that, all it's saying is that we support the little theater, I mean, yeah, the theater project, not that we support LH CDC or any other entity. So personally, I, and like I said, it goes a lot deeper than that, I think, with the organization. So personally, I'm in favor of it.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, this kind of thing is just, to me, I fail to understand it. I mean, here we have an organization that has had, you know, issues with compliance, and I, to this day, I don't know who are the representatives, who is in the Board of Directors. And so I have difficulties that one day they ask, and like, Councilmember Rouge, I wasn't here, but apparently they were nodding their head, and then the next day say, no. You know, we just got to be a lot more straight on this. I think the Lompoc Theater is vital to our old town. I think we need to revitalize it. I also do think that it should be private-based. I don't think our city can afford it this time to subsidize other projects. So I think the Lompoc Theater needs to happen. If this resolution helps in any way, shape, or form for the Lompoc Theater to happen without having a fiscal impact on our budget, I will, I will support it. Thank you.
Let me, if you'd like to make that in form, or Bob, you want to put it in my, you spoke first?
Well, I didn't get a second on my motion, so I guess we're going to pull that.
I've heard a proposal, we approve it in a second, is that, pardon? Okay. Are there any, we'll open this time for public comment. Is there any comments from the public on the item before us? Seeing none, we'll go back to, bring it back to council?
Eric, some of here?
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Eric Brown, citizen. I think it would be a fantastic idea to revitalize the theater itself, because a lot of our youth would highly appreciate going to shows there, plays there, whatever, anything, or anybody would like to have available and ready for Lompoc's youth. I think it would be a good idea to keep them away from drug life and gang life, and it's, it's part of my childhood, and I'd like to see it go further into the future, as far as something that the city of Lompoc can utilize. That's just my opinion on that, but I'm sure there are people who would agree to that. But that's about, I think that, I think that we should vote to move forward in it. I think that would be a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Seeing no one else rise, we'll close the, this item and bring it back again. Now, Ann?
I'm going to move that we adopt RDA Resolution Number 10-145 in support of the Lompoc Theater Project.
We have a motion?
I second that motion.
Ann, a second? I'd like to speak to the motion. I will be voting for it. I don't understand why LH CDC has asked us to pull this and not approve it. They didn't tell us it will harm it in any way. They just said that they don't think it'll do them the good they want in getting the financing. But I, this is something we asked for, and I'm going to vote for it. No other comments, let's cast our vote. Approves 4 to 1. The next item is the Northern California Power Agency. Mr. Stassi?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, staff, members of the public. And I would also like to acknowledge the developer of this project, who's worked with the NCPA through the RFP process, that wanted to be here tonight to hear this discussion, Jim Lovell with Lightbeam Energy. We're here tonight to request approval to participate in Phase 2 of an NCPA project for conducting certain. in Phase Two of an NCPA project for conducting certain activities for NCPA's solar voltaic project. Before getting into the merits of the project, I'd like to briefly review the three-phase process that NCPA uses, so that you have a little understanding of why we were here on May 30th with the third-phase agreement, and why we're here tonight asking for second-phase agreement support. What NCPA does is it has what's called a first phase of any project or idea. So if a member has a thought on the direction the organization should be going, or as in this case, the utility directors and NCPA staff pretty much at the same time determined that there was a need to develop greater use of renewable energy because of requirements that were coming, that certain amounts of your native load needs have to be met with renewable energy. So that's how this project got started. So the first phase, you just kind of explore things that are of interest. There's money in the general budget of NCPA to do this, so that's at the staff's discretion. I think it's about $200,000, $250,000 a year that's budgeted. It does not require any signed agreements at all. And that's kind of how ideas kind of gestate and get brought forward. So that's how we got to this stage, which was a result of exploring renewable energy ideas through an RFP process. Then the second phase, which is tonight's requested action, that's when, you know, I would guess I refer to as the study process. So that's when you go through the planning and development activities, you handle your SEQA requirements, you draft your contract or get your contract deal points, you do any interconnection studies, and you look for fatal flaws, either in the project itself or the economics. And that requires a signed agreement of those that are willing to participate in it. And that is funded by only the participating members. Then, if second-phase activities prove viable, a project may get to the third phase. And that's what you did on May 20th for the Low Di Energy Center. So when you get to the third phase, then that's when you do the design, you construct the project, you obtain the financing, if any licensing is necessary, you do all of that. That requires a signed agreement and approval of the governing body, which you did on May 20th. And it commits you for the duration of the project. So like the Low Di Energy Center, that's a 30-year project. So that was the kind of commitment we made under that third-phase agreement. And then it's funded by the participating members. In that case, you recall, the participating members decided to get the bond financing for them. So that's how the system works. We're now in a Phase Two process, which is a relatively short-duration activity funded by those participants interested in the project and expected to be completed in... under a one-year period. So going back to November of '07, that's when the NCPA Commission approved a third-phase agreement for NCPA green power projects. And when they approved that, they actually set aside funds that were put in the budget, that were responsibilities of the participants that wanted to participate in the green power project. So they got through a third-phase agreement. There, eight members decided they wanted to participate, and our funding staff person that kind of runs that and does some, you know, minor things for that group. So that's like an umbrella now. We've got that third-phase organization. And then kind of bubbling up is this NCPA solar PV project. And so that comes forward. And among those eight members, three of the members say, "Hey, that looks really great to us. We want to go forward with the Phase Two study." And so NCPA goes forward with the design of the Phase Two study and brings it forward to the board for its approval. And the NCPA Commission did approve it on June 17th. Now it goes back to the individual participating members that also have to approve it. So under this agreement, if it's approved, we will participate with NCPA in evaluating five renewable solar energy projects identified through the RFP process. So this goes back about 14 months from this process all started, getting it to this point where the bids have been narrowed down, some due diligence has been done. And we got down to two developers that are, we consider viable for solar projects. And the first one to emerge comes from Light Beam Energy. And that's the developer that would be on the other side of the project, the other party to the NCPA agreement. So we're now proceeding with this project-specific second-phase agreement. And if approved, we'll direct staff to conduct the appropriate studies for these five solar photovoltaic projects that we refer to as the solar PV project. Our interest in the solar PV project is based upon one of the developers coming to Lompoc and looking for sites in this area, and identifying two sites that have merit, both on city property, which makes it so much easier for us to do a development. And one of those projects was included in this first round of solar PV projects. And that targeted site is on the city's airport property. And it's a city... It's a site that would bring several benefits to the city. One is, it's on our electrical system, so we don't have to worry a whole lot about interconnection matters, dealing with the ISO for transmission, transmission losses, sharing the project with other participants. It could be all ours and sized around this one-megawatt size to be appropriate for our needs. So our interest is really in one of the five projects that are in this five independent facilities that are going to be looked at. And they range in size from a half-megawatt to five megawatts. Ours is on the order of one megawatts, one megawatt, which is a pretty good fit for us. That would provide about one and a half percent of our annual energy needs and put us well within reach of the council-established goal of having 33% of our annual energy needs from renewable resources by 2015. The state is pointing toward 2020. So we've got about a five-year cushion that we think we could easily meet. And if you look at the proposed legislation for not meeting those needs, the penalties are pretty severe. So all utilities are giving it their best efforts to make sure they can meet this 2020 goal. The price is expected to be $118 per megawatt hour and would escalate at about... at exactly a half percent per year. So you look at solar projects, and all the energy is valuable because they come on peak. Generally, I've heard people say around 10:00 a.m., the solar panels wake up and start soaking energy. Then they go to sleep about 5:00 in the evening. And in that block, when you're drawing this and developing this solar energy, you have it, you know, when energy is most expensive, because it's on peak. So it has a greater value than 24-hour energy, which sometimes is a problem in light-load hours, when you don't know what to do with it, and you've got to take the plant offline. The cost for this project is expected to be, in this Phase Two analysis, $523,000. And the way that the financing was set up by NCPA and recommended to the board, and which the commission, rather, which it passed, for that amount, it would be shared by the three utilities that are interested in their projects. And so our share would come to $58,400 for the expected second-phase costs. NCPA is asked to include a contingency of 20%. So that's $11,700, and that was established in the NCPA Commission action. And there's a third possible cost of $12,500, which is referred to at-risk cost. And we would only pay that if the project proved feasible and we decided, "No, we still don't want to participate." And so that would reimburse the developer for half of his cost of going through the process he has to do with getting the project approved by the ISO and other governing agencies. I think I said earlier that this process would probably take about 11 months from today. So in conclusion, this project is five facilities. Our interest is in one. We could have 100% of that facility. It will be behind our meter, which gives us significant cost savings. And I said it would be capable of providing about a percent and a half of our annual energy needs. We only have to purchase energy delivered. So if for some reason it doesn't work, it's down, something breaks, we don't pay during that period. We just... The energy is metered, and we pay for energy delivered. But, you know, these things tend to be pretty simple. There aren't any moving parts. So generally, you get your projected output. The last thing I'd like to repeat is that approval of this second-phase agreement doesn't commit the city to participate in the construction of a solar PV project, nor obligate it to purchase any energy from the projects that go through this. All of that would be addressed at the time we would bring a Phase Three agreement forward. So we're recommending that we be allowed to participate in NCPA's solar PV project under the second-phase agreement, copies of which you have, and which would give us the funding for the planning and development activities for the project at this stage. So each of these stages has, you know, a distinct point at which you stop, do an assessment, make a decision whether to go forward. And by this action, we'll be locking ourselves into this second-phase study agreement. And nothing beyond that, in approximately one year, we'd be back with the results of that study, likely asking to go forward with the third-phase agreement. And that concludes my report.
Any questions, Mr. Stasi, at this time? Ms. Marner?
Thank you, Mr. Stasi. I have two questions. One of them is about the environmental analysis. It says that we do not need it right now. Is that implied that at a later time, we will?
Yes. We will eventually. Since this is just study activities, we don't have to do a full SEQA at this time, because we aren't... It's basically, we aren't disturbing any earth or doing anything physical.
Okay. The second question is that we... It's going to cost us $58,000, thereabouts?
That's what we hope. There is a contingency and...
Yeah, I mean, the bare bottom.
Yes, that's it.
This is coming out of our enterprise funds, I assume?
Yes, it comes out of electric utility enterprise funds.
Do we have this already on the budget, or...?
We don't have it specifically in the budget, but we have, you know, budget line items for NCPA activities and resources, power purchases, studies, and kind of like one big lump sum of money.
So you have some discretionary spending, per se?
Yes. And not something we anticipated when the budget was prepared. So we have, you know, just general funds for opportunities like this that come up.
This is not going to cost a rate increase?
No, it is not.
Thank you.
Mr. Lingle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Stasi, I have one question and then two concerns. The question first. You had mentioned the $12,500 as an additional cost, but isn't that really... It's part of the original $58,000 if we go forward?
No, it's on top of that. If we back out of the project, we would pay half of what the developer is doing during the Phase Two, while we're doing our Phase Two.
It is truly an additional cost if we back out?
That's true.
Okay, okay. Two concerns I have are, based on our conversation earlier this evening about projects, who on our part will be taking... keeping an eye on this project and managing it? I know NCPA has their own team, but who on our city's part will be looking out for us?
Well, presently, I am, because it's under the NCPA Green Power Program. Now, there will be a participants' group formed, and at that time, Marty Huestler is most likely the one that will be managing the project from our perspective. But NCPA is, you know, pretty skilled and does this all the time. So our involvement will be primarily on going through approval process and making sure it fits our resource needs. But we would have project participation meetings, and then we can call or visit anytime we had a concern.
Okay. And will the council be getting periodic reports on the progress?
Whatever the council would desire, we can do. And if that's the council pleasure, we could do like quarterly reports on the project and its progress.
Okay. And then the other one is, I bring this up every time, and it's in there every time, the contingency of 20%. I just always feel that a 20% contingency is high. I believe I've seen as high as 25% contingency on some city projects. Is this just something we always write in, 20%, 20%, 20%, or is there something about this project that we really need a 20% contingency?
It's something that NCPA insists upon, so that they know if costs, you know, escalate a bit, that they don't have to go back and go through this process again with each individual member and risk delay. So they have built that into the project participation agreements. And for studies, you know, 20% isn't a real big number on a construction project when you're dealing with a... When you actually have a design, you're dealing with that. I agree, too, 20% is excessive. But I don't think it is for small studies like this.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Dur?
Mr. Stasi, I take it that council's already given the approval for Phase One, correct?
There's no approval required. That's... Council gives that approval when their commissioner approves the NCPA budget at its annual meeting. There are funds in there for Phase One that aren't specific, that the general manager of NCPA has the discretion to spend in accordance with the needs of the members without going back for any further approval.
Okay, so then my next and final question is, has staff been satisfied with Phase One?
Yes. I've been very active in the NCPA Green Power Project and reviewed maybe two or three dozen projects in the time that I've been on that committee. And this is the first one that I felt comfortable in bringing back to the council. We've looked at some wind projects, biomass projects, other solar projects, natural gas from manure, trash, et cetera, et cetera. And this is the first one I feel is solid enough to bring forward and ask for approval to participate.
Thank you, Mr. Stasi.
Thank you.
Any comments from the public?
Mayor and City Council, Eric Brown, resident. I have a couple of comments that I'd like to present. What will the city of Lompoc's residents be returned if it allows this investment for green power? And yes, it would create jobs, but however, it is in the interest of the common good for the city of Lompoc. And these are my questions and my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Any other comments from the public at this time? We'll close public comment period. Mr. Stasi? Will this benefit the city of Lompoc?
I think it will benefit the city of Lompoc and benefit the broader world, you know, non-polluting generation that will displace polluting generation. And so it will bring benefits to the city, and it will help to market the city as a green community.
Well, plus, if the power goes out on one of... Well, plus, if the power goes out on one of the grids, right? This will pick up the power.
Yes, it wouldn't go out on the grid, so.
Okay, wherever it goes out.
So, yeah, I did mention a couple benefits in the staff report. I'll repeat them here. For the general city, there'd be some revenue derived from the lease of the space at the airport, so the airport authority would get that. For us, there would be benefits in the cost of the, what you might call the various additional costs associated with buying power or having a plant. For instance, you know, the delivering the power. You've got, you have line losses, you have transformations you go through, you have fees, you pay other utilities. They're called pancake rates. You run into so many of these various fees, all of those would be eliminated. So there's an advantage of being able to cite a facility of any size within your own service territory, and we get that from this project.
And this is the only project we have that's inside our meters?
Correct.
Or if we have this, it will be the only one, yeah. But Ms. Marner?
Just to complement your comment, I think you do make a very good point, and that is that it is really cost-effective if we can generate the power here and just transmit it here. I mean, transmission line cost and operating cost really go way down, so it makes a lot of sense from that point of view. Thank you.
Here we have a request before us to sign an agreement, participate in the second phase. What are the wishes of the council?
I move approval of staff's recommendation.
Move motion?
I'll second it.
A second? Comments, requests? Let's cast our vote. That passes unanimously. Written communications, other than the notice from our city clerk? Do we have any written, written communications to announce? Oral communications, two minutes, again, for any seconds if anyone would like to address the city council. Seeing no one rise, final item, last chance for us to make any comments. Mr.?
Don't say Mr. Roger.
Mr. Durham, this time.
I want to inform the council and staff that I will not be attending the next council meeting on the 17th of August.
I forgot to mention earlier, I had an email from my Public Safety Commissioner, and evidently, at their last Public Safety Commission last Wednesday, Chief Dabney gave a report on Proposition 19 that's coming up and asked that we perhaps review a resolution speaking against Proposition 19. I believe that's the one to legalize marijuana in the state. So I would like to see that agendized, and maybe a report from Chief Dabney on his views on that.
Seeing no comment, I assume there's support of that request. There is?
Yes.
We got it. Good. Any other comments this time? I have one. The NCPA Commission meeting was held since our last council meeting, and I attended that up in Northern California. This meeting wasn't held at the NCPA headquarters. It was held instead at the Stanislaus River Project so that we could meet with the employees and some of the officials in the community. Nothing else? Let's, we're adjourned.